Check audio, testing audio, check one, two.
Hi Deputy Mayor Singh, can we test your audio?
Hi Deputy Mayor Singh, can we test your audio?
Okay, welcome to Brampton City Council. As we begin today's meeting, we would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the traditional territory of the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, before then, the traditional territory of the Horasnee here on Awenda. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Thank you. All members of council are present in the chambers today. Except for Deputy Mayor Singh who may be joining us online and he is away on city business. This takes us to the approval of agenda. The clerk has several amendments. I believe there's an item to be added by Counselor Keenan as well.
Through you Mayor Brown. Revised agenda was published on Tuesday. The following items were included on the revised agendas. 4.1, the minutes were published. 6.1, proclamations F and G were added. 6.3, the announcement for Nigerian farmers market, a video was added. 7.1, staff presentation, the presentation was added. 8.1, staff update, presentation was published. 10.3.1, staff report, the report was added. 12.2, summary of recommendations, the recommendations were published. 18.7 and 18.8 are two bylaws that were also published on the revised agenda. That's it, Mayor Brown.
Okay, Counselor Keenan, you've got an item to be added?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to add a announcement for the U11 AA Brampton 45s. Also, sorry Mr. Mayor, also there's a video that will be played that's about a minute and a half.
So to the clerk, that was put down as item 6.5. I'm gonna see if we can do this before all the proclamations. Proclamations could take 45 minutes. And two of my friends on the team, Mikey Miele and Hudson Ambrose told me they're very concerned about being late for school. They don't want to miss math class, so I really believe we should move their item up first so they can get back to school and learn after we celebrate their championship. So we'll do the first item. Okay, and I believe Counselor Santos has a proposed addition as well. Nope, on the parking? Oh no, so we're gonna bring forward Counselor Santos's motion to the staff presentation. So we have a motion put forward by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Palashi to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of community interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered in today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. We have the following council minutes before us today. A minute city council regular meeting, March 26, 2025. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I have a motion put forward by Counselor Vicente and Counselor Braar to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor, motion carries.
I'm gonna ask to hold the minutes until at a later time after I can have a quick discussion with staff and whomever. We asked for something to be pulled out of those minutes.
I think we got the answer on that. It might have been the letters of credit.
That's right. It was the motion that they had, the reconsideration of the reconsideration. So that needs to be dealt with.
So we don't need to hold it. Motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion, and I'll read out the relevant agenda items the members can identify to be held for debate. 8.1, government relations matters.
Presentation was published. 10.3.1, staff report. The report was added. 12.2, summary of recommendations. The recommendations were published. 18.7 and 18.8 are two bylaws that were also published on the revised agenda. That's it, Mayor Brown.
Okay, Counselor Keenan, you've got an item to be added?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to add a announcement for the U-11 AA Brampton 45s. Also, sorry, Mr. Mayor, also there's a video that will be played that's about a minute and a half.
So to the clerk, that was put down as item 6.5. I'm gonna see if we can do this before all the proclamations. Proclamations could take 45 minutes. And two of my friends on the team, Mikey Miele and Hudson Ambrose, told me they're very concerned about being late for school. They don't want to miss math class, so I really believe we should move their item up first so they can get back to school and learn after we celebrate their championship. So, yeah, so we'll do the first item. Okay, and I believe Counselor Santos has a proposed addition as well. Nope, on the parking? Oh, no, so we're gonna bring forward Counselor Santos's motion to the staff presentation. So we have a motion put forward by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Palashi, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of community interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered in today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. We have the following council minutes before us today. Minutet City Council Regular Meeting, March 26, 2025. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I have a motion put forward by Counselor Vicente and Counselor Brar to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries.
I'm gonna ask to hold the minutes until at a later time after I can have a quick discussion with staff and whomever. We asked for something to be pulled out of those minutes.
I think we got the answer on that. It might have been the letters of credit.
That's right. It was the motion that they had, the reconsideration of the reconsideration. So that needs to be dealt with.
There's a motion on here.
Okay, so we don't need to hold it. Motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion, and I'll read out the relevant agenda items. The members can identify to be held for debate. 8.1, Government Relations Matters. 10.21, Staff Report, Request Municipal Significance Designation for Liquor Stale Special Permit Occasion. 10.31, Staff Report, Amendments to 2024 Development Charges Bylaws. 12.1, Summary Recommendations Committee of Council, April 2. 12.2, Summary Recommendations Planning and Development Committee. 13.1, Polish Heritage Month designation or Heritage Month. We want that held? Doesn't need to be, we can put in consent. 14.1, Correspondence, Luriz McCatter, Executive Director Brampton BIA, Downtown Brampton Parking. 14.2, Correspondence, Luriz, hold. Preferred Matters List, 16.1. 19.1, Closed Session Minutes City Council. 19.2, Closed Session Minutes City Council. 19.3, 19.4, 19.5 required to be held. The clerk will summarize those items to be included in the consent motion for approval.
Through you Mayor Brown, the following items will be included on the consent motion. 8.1, Government Relations Matters. 10.2.1, Staff Report, Request for Municipal Significance Designation. 10.3.1, Staff Report, Amendment to Development Charges Bylaws. 12.1, Summary of Recommendations for Committee of Council. 12.2, Summary of Recommendations for Planning and Development Committee. 13.1, Polish Heritage Month. 14.1, Correspondence from the BIA Regarding Downtown Parking. 16.1, Preferred Matters List. 19.1, Closed Minutes. 19.2, Closed Minutes.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Counselor Torres, seconded by Counselor Power, to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to the announcement from Counselor Keenan. So the floor is Counselor Keenan's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on behalf of the City Council, it's my pleasure to recognize and congratulate the U-11 AA Brampton 45s team for their unbelievable, successful 24-25 season, ending with the ultimate reward, being crowned the Tri-County Champions. This 2024 and 2025 season has been an exceptional one for them. It was made up of 15 players of 10 and 11-year-olds, four coaches, and we're not gonna mention how old they are. Team manager, parent reps, and what's said to be the best parents and fans any team could ask for. They logged 80 total games this season with 56 wins, 19 losses, and 13 ties. They played in seven tournaments. They've won four of those tournaments, and they also won a consolation championship in an Oshawa tournament. They were also, this is really important, they were extremely active in our community. They raised 3500, over $3,500 for the Terry Fox Foundation. They collected 1,900 pounds of food for regeneration, and they take in part in many park cleanups, which I was happy to be part of. But I really wanna highlight is their path to winning the Tri-County Championship. And I must add that it is the first one a Brampton 45s hockey team, AA, to win since 2011, so it's been 14 years. This Brampton 45 team tied in fourth spot, so they had a playoff in the quarterfinals against Guelph where they won 4-0. Moved them to the semifinals to play the third-place team in a best-of-three series. First game they dominated, winning 6-2. Game two was a little bit more of a closer competition. It went 3-3, went into overtime with 29 seconds remaining. Their captain, number two Spencer Novosel, netted the game winner to send them to the finals. It was also best-of-three series. Game one, which was played at home here at Susan Fennell. I was happy to attend that game with my family. It was extremely exciting, to say the least. It was tied 3-3 with a minute 48, and let me tell you that Michael Millet netted, what I would say would be one of the greatest highlights, backhander with time running down. I looked on TSN the next morning to see if they were gonna cover it. It was such a fantastic goal. We went crazy in that crowd. You could hear us well out onto steals. It was crazy. That brought them to game two, which was a closer game, was 0-0. And then there was some great plays, and again, their captain scored the game-winning goal, which won them the championship. A special shout-out goes out to the two goalies. What a ride-or-die team, and I would be remiss not to mention their coaches, the team staff, the team managers, you know. And I'm gonna ask Justin Ambrose to come down and say a few words. And just to Justin, what an amazing community activist. He's just always doing great things, and not just what he does for this team, but youth in general and in sports. We were great to have another team here last year. We have had another Brampton candidates team won a championship, and it is great to see that Brampton Championships in our youth sports is back. And a lot of that goes to you and all the coaches, and thanks to all of the parents, as I can attest to, and I know you can, if you can, if you can. Getting your kids to sports is no easy task, so well done to the parents and to the team. Just keep it up, and Justin, go ahead and take your time, then we'll play the video.
Yeah, thanks to you, Council, for having us in here today. As Counselor Keenan mentioned, those 15 guys up there had a heck of a year, and we're super proud of them, so we get a round of applause for those guys. As Counselor Keenan mentioned, they were victorious in the finals of the Tri-County Championship, and you know, that was a really nice bow on a great season. And as he mentioned, one of the things that coaching, myself and the other coaches do is we really look to get them, you know, hockey's just a vessel to teach them how to be good young men. And they do that in the community, and they're as successful off the ice as they are on the ice, which is super important for us, and it's really great to see in the Brampton community. I hope these guys are an inspiration for kind of the next generation of kids coming through Brampton hockey. With us today, we have Catherine Ambrose, my wife. She's the VP of Planning and Strategic Marketing for Brampton Hockey. And we're really focusing and pouring a lot of our efforts into the grassroots level right now to kind of regrow the game, because coming out of COVID, we saw a lot of decline in numbers there, and it's been getting better and better, and these guys are a testament to that. And then last but not least, thank Council for, a lot of people realize the efforts that go into making hockey affordable in Brampton for these guys. It costs two to three times as much elsewhere to play the same quality of hockey. So thank you, Council, for that, and specifically Mayor Brown. I think he likes hockey. It's, I believe he does. I've shared the ice with him a few times, but just the efforts, not just with hockey, but with all minor hockey, with all minor sports in Brampton, really promoting it and pushing that, making it part of the community. So thank you, everyone, thank you, Mayor Brown.
So, Justin, we're gonna ask for a team photo, just looking if there's any questions for Justin. Maybe you could lend Spencer to the Maple Leafs in about two weeks. I'm worried that they're playing Ottawa, and we don't, we would never wanna lose to Ottawa, so we need some game winners for the Maple Leafs as well. Yeah, okay, so we'll get a group photo with Council. Oh, do the video and then the photo, yeah. Okay, we'll continue with our agenda, and we have proclamations today. We have a number of proclamations. For those receiving proclamations, we're gonna do it all together at the end, and we'll present the proclamation to you. The first proclamation is National Film Day, and I believe Counselor Santos, who's passionate about film, wanted to read that proclamation.
Thank you so much, and through you, Mr. Mayor, passionate about film and the arts in general in Brampton, and so this is a proclamation for National Film Day. Whereas April 16 marks National Canadian Film Day, an annual coast-to-coast celebration of Canadian cinema organized by Real Canada, the city of Brampton continues to demonstrate a strong commitment to growing its emerging film sector and supporting local creators. This year's celebration will feature free film screenings, talks, and networking opportunities, reinforcing the city's dedication to supporting Brampton's film community. On Wednesday, April 16, Brampton Arts Organization and Experience Brampton will host the Fourth Annual Brampton Film Showcase at Silver City Cineplex. On Thursday, April 17, the city of Brampton hosts an evening of short film screenings and a feature-length film by local filmmakers at Cyril Clark Theatre. National Canadian Film Day is a chance to reflect on the diverse stories, talent, and creativity shaping Canada's cinematic landscape. Residents and visitors are encouraged to attend a special event or explore films created by Brampton filmmakers. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 16, 2025, as National Canadian Film Day in Brampton.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Santos, and I believe Michael Vickers is here to respond, and also has an announcement. I'm sure we can do it at the same time. Item 6.4 was an announcement on the same item.
Good morning, Mayor Brown and members of council. I am thrilled to share that the Brampton Arts Organization is once again celebrating National Canadian Film Day, with 2025 marking four years since we first brought this celebration to Brampton alongside the city's Film Office and the Cultural Services Team. What started as a few short films for friends and family has grown into something truly special. Next Wednesday, we'll welcome hundreds of film lovers to our Brampton Film Showcase, a free public screening featuring the work of 17 incredible local filmmakers. For many of these creatives, it's their very first time screening in public. For others, they've toured these films across North America and the world, TIFF, New York, LA, and now they're bringing these stories home to Brampton. By supporting film and television in Brampton and the artists that make it happen, we not only help preserve and promote Brampton's stories and culture, but help develop and grow the film industry here, an industry that contributed over $11 billion to Canada's GDP in 2023 to 2024 alone. Please join us next Wednesday, April 16, from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. at Silver City Cineplex to celebrate these filmmakers and experience the magic of Canadian cinema right here in Brampton. Thank you.
Okay, I believe Counselor Brar actually held the discussion, and you wanted to speak to that as well? Oh, your sponsor, just a sponsor, that's okay, well, thank you. Michael will present the proclamation to you after. Our next proclamation is an issue that Counselor Brar is passionate about in Plant-Based Food Awareness Week. She's also told me that she's expecting all of council to drink a special green smoothie as part of this pledge for the next month. I am intrigued to hear about what she has signed us up for. Over to Counselor Brar.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we have the proclamation for our Plant-Based Food Awareness Week. There is a climate and ocean biodiversity crisis. The main greenhouse gases, carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, are at record levels and rapidly accelerating. Food contributes to one-third of the greenhouse gases, mostly from meat, dairy, and egg consumption. Animal farming is also the driving force impacting other planetary boundaries such as biodiversity loss, deforestation, species extinction, freshwater use, soil degradation, and ocean dead zones. According to climate scientists, it will be impossible for any government to meet the goals to set under the Paris Agreement without a major shift towards plant-based diets, even if current fossil fuel emissions are completely halted. A plant-based diet, rich in fruits, vegetables, and whole foods, offers significant health benefits, optimizing well-being and aiding in disease prevention and treatment. The Plant-Based Treaty's mission is to promote a shift towards a just, plant-based food system that would enable us to live safely within our planetary boundaries and reforest the earth. Their vision includes a global plant-based treaty attached to the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change to enable a plant-based food system, and secondly, for cities and institutions to implement best practices in plant-based food policies. On November 20, 2024, Brampton became the first city in Ontario to endorse the call for a global plant-based treaty to improve accessibility and promote the consumption of plant-based foods to help mitigate and adapt Brampton to the impacts of climate change, improve social justice and economic well-being. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 14 to 20, 2025, as Plant-Based Food Awareness Week in the city of Brampton.
And is there someone here from Plant-Based Food Awareness Week who'd like to respond to the proclamation? Please come forward, yeah.
Yes, so I'm with part of our group from Plant-Based Treaty Brampton Chapter. Thank you so much, City Council. We're very proud and very excited to bring this initiative to the city of Brampton for Brampton residents to feel healthier, contribute to the solutions to the climate crisis, but also building community and supporting local businesses. So thank you, everyone, and we have some, I believe, some green smoothie. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to the 30-day challenge, and Counselor Brar's gonna keep us to it. Yes, please. Yes, please.
My name is Anita Cryes. I'm Global Campaign Coordinator for Plant-Based Treaty and I just wanted to thank Brampton for endorsing the treaty, but also for launching the first-ever Plant-Based Food Awareness Week in a city in Canada. So we wanted to kick it off with a hyper-nourishing green smoothie. People don't eat enough vegetables and raw vegetables, so having a green smoothie is a great way to hyper-nourish yourself starting in the morning, and we're following Dr. Brooke Goldner's recipe. And so what's in it is kale. Kale is the most nutrient-dense food on the planet. So dark-leafy greens are the most nutrient-dense foods. After that is cabbage, things like that, and then other vegetables of various colors, but vegetables are the most nutrient-dense foods on the planet. And so in the green smoothie, you have kale, water. People don't drink enough water. You should have about three liters of water a day. So there's water, and then there's flaxseed for omega-3. So people need more omega-3s because they get too many omega-6s, but they need omega-3s. And you can get it from chia and flaxseed. And then we put ripe bananas and mango to make it taste nice. The fruit is there just to make it delicious. So I hope you enjoy it. Cheers. And we'd like to have the green smoothie in institutions. So this is an individual challenge for Earth Month, but our goal is to get it into schools, hospitals, universities, and other institutions, and we'd love your help on that. Maybe with the region of Peel, you could help us see how we can influence the hospitals and have healthy food everywhere in all the institutions. But we wanted to thank you so much, and our team is here today, and we'd just like to thank you so much for launching the first-ever Plant-Based Food Awareness Week.
Okay, well, that was a great smoothie. We've already finished ours, and we'll present the proclamation to you once we finish the proclamations. Oh, Counselor Brier has something to add.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, this smoothie tastes really good. I know staff have had this, but especially for counselors and staff members who are so busy in their daily lives, having that nutritious drink right in the morning. I'm looking at a lot of council members and they're really enjoying this drink, so I'm definitely going to be part of this 30-day smoothie green challenge, and I know other council members are waiting to do that, too. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Okay, our next proclamation is something that Counselor Santos is also passionate about, and that's World Primary Immune Deficiency Week.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Thanks so much, Mayor Brown. World Primary Immune Deficiency Week, whereas primary immunodeficiencies are inherited genetic conditions that affect immune system development and/or function, and an estimated seventy to ninety percent of people living with primary immunodeficiencies remain undiagnosed worldwide. Individuals affected by primary immunodeficiencies often live with an invisible disease, facing significant challenges in obtaining proper diagnosis, treatment, and support. World Primary Immune Deficiency Week serves as a vital initiative to raise awareness, amplify the voices of those impacted, and turn awareness into meaningful action, leading to progress in diagnosis and care. Immunity Canada envisions a future in which all Canadians with immunodeficiency disorders have access to the resources they need to thrive and continues to empower those impacted through education, support, advocacy, community building, and research. World Primary Immune Deficiency Week provides an opportunity for patients, healthcare professionals, policymakers, schools, workplaces, and the general public to collaborate in advancing early diagnosis and optimal treatment for primary immunodeficiencies. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 22nd to 29th, 2025 as World Primary Immune Deficiency Week in the city of Brampton. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
I'm looking up to see if we have anyone from World Primary Immune Deficiency Week here. I don't believe we have someone coming in, but we will make sure the proclamation is shared with them. Our next item is Parental Alienation Awareness Day, and Counselor Keenan will read out the proclamation, and I know Chef Nessa is normally the one who organizes this. I don't see her here today, but she has such a passion for this annual day in flag raising, and we'll make sure she knows that we had the proclamation again here today in the city of Brampton. Counselor Keenan, if you'd like to read out the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas parental alienation is often found in high conflict separations, divorce, and custody disputes, and takes advantage of the dependency and responsibility of a child. Parental Alienation Awareness Day encourages parents to put their children first and learn to co-parent. Parental alienation deprives children of the rights to love and be loved by both parents. Behaviors such as speaking negatively about a parent to or in front of a child can destroy the bond between a loving parent and a child. Medical professionals agree the issue of parental alienation exists, and it can cause mental and emotional harm to a child and can affect them as adults with tragic consequences. This year is the Fourteenth Annual Bubble for Love Day. On April 25th, everybody is asked to blow soap bubbles and wear royal blue to support children being loved by both parents. With awareness comes education, understanding, and the power to stop the cycle of abuse. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Parental Alienation Awareness Day in the city of Brampton.
Heard with Shanessa and her group. Our next proclamation is Human Values Day, which is April 24th each year, and Counselor Tore will read the proclamation for Human Values Day.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Whereas April 24th, 2025 marks Human Values Day, a day to raise and increase awareness of the basic human values of truth, right conduct, peace, love, and nonviolence, as well as all the multiple sub-values like honesty, integrity, kindness, and caring. These values are inherent in all creeds, countries, cultures, and communities, making these values truly values without borders and making the city of Brampton a city of character for the greatest benefit of all our residents. Walk for Values is designed to raise the awareness of human values and to promote individual responsibility towards the collective future of humanity. Walk for Values is a platform to educate people on the importance of practicing these five human values in their daily lives and the awareness it creates in the making of enlightened citizens for universal peace. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2025 as Human Values Day in the city of Brampton.
Thank you, Counselor Tore. Is there a representative here from the Human Values proclamation? I don't believe so. We'll make sure the proclamation is shared with them. Our next item is Book Week, Brampton Book Week. Book Week is a citywide celebration of storytelling, reading, and literature, recognizing the power of books to inspire imagination, foster dialogue, and connect communities. Actually, just this week, Counselor Keenan was telling me he wants us to get more books collected for those community book-sharing efforts. The city of Brampton, in partnership with local cultural organizations, has launched Book Week to celebrate Brampton's role as a champion of diverse storytelling and vibrant literary hub that honors writers, readers, and storytellers from all backgrounds. Brampton is home to a growing community of talented authors, including several inductees to the Brampton Arts Walk of Fame, whose stories have enriched the national, global literary landscape. During Book Week, a variety of book events and literary programming will take place across the city, including author talks, spoken word performances, writing workshops, and literary showcases in alignment with Canada Book Day, and of course, Brampton's very own, the Festival of Literary Diversity known as FOLD. The aim is to increase access to literature, highlight Brampton's creative community, and celebrate the richness and diversity of stories that shape our cultural identity while encouraging all residents to visit their local libraries, attend community events, and support local booksellers and storytellers. And Councilor Power, whether it's opening new libraries, which he just got into this year's budget, or the one we're working on in the downtown, this is a city that believes in literature. Counselor Santos told me that the Festival of Literary Diversity won't be here today to speak to this, but they'll be here on April 23rd. And for those that don't know about the Festival of Literary Diversity, when I see that purple sign, it excites me because this is a great festival. I always said, one day, we're going to have the best literary festival in the province, and I think that one day has already arrived. If you haven't seen FOLD, you have to go and visit it. J. Allen and her team there do an incredible job, and we should celebrate literary diversity with passion in our city. So on that note, we will make sure this is presented to FOLD when they come, or do we have a representative from any of the libraries here today? I don't... We do?
Navjeet's on the library board.
Oh, Navjeet's on the library board. Navjeet, we will present this proclamation to you, and Counselor Santé, we will present this as to our...
Take up the space in the audience as well.
Do we have members in the audience from Brampton Book Week? Okay, please come forward, yeah. Do you want to say anything?
That's okay.
Okay, so you're back in a short time, but we'll present this proclamation to you and know that we love literature and books in the city of Brampton. Our last proclamation is something Counselor Pulashy requested to read, something he's very passionate about. He told me we have the best volunteers in the country in Brampton and wanted to read out the proclamation for National Volunteer Week.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and you're absolutely right. National Volunteer Week, whereas National Volunteer Week taking place from April 27th to May 3rd, 2025, is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the countless contribution of volunteers who enhance our city's quality of life. Through their generosity and commitment, volunteers inspire civic engagement and exemplify the values of empathy, service, and community building. Volunteer MBCs, a nonprofit organization serving the municipality to the south of us, Brampton and Calladen, which connects individuals to meaningful volunteer opportunities, addresses community needs, and fosters impactful relationships between residents and local volunteer organizations. Volunteer MBC's mission is to connect the community, and its vision is to improve lives throughout volunteerism, creating positive change by empowering individuals to get involved. This year's theme, something I'm a little bit accustomed to, "Making a Wave," celebrates the ripple effect of volunteerism, encouraging residents from all backgrounds to come together, build momentum, and create lasting impact in their neighborhoods. Let us take this time to acknowledge, appreciate, and support the remarkable volunteers who make our city a stronger, more connected, and compassionate place to live. Therefore, Mayor Patrick Brown, with the full support of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 27th to May 3rd, 2025 as National Volunteer Week in the city of Brampton.
Okay, and do we have one of our volunteer organizations here? Great.
Excellent. Good morning. I'm Shanabasi. I'm the Director of Community Development for Volunteer MBC. Thank you so much, Mayor Brown and members of council, for making this proclamation and recognizing the importance of volunteers to our community. Even this morning, we heard from so many organizations and so many worthwhile causes for environment, for health, for literacy, for families, youth sports, and much more. And they all have one common thread, is that volunteers are behind them, supporting it. And we can't take for granted that volunteers would always be there. They're there because we make the effort to acknowledge them, to promote volunteerism, to let them know. So at Volunteer MBC, we like to ask people in the community, can you help? How can you help? And we tell them many ways that they can help. We're one of the few organizations that is a backbone support to other nonprofits in the community, so this is our bread and butter. This is our focus, to encourage people to care for their neighbor, especially in these tough economic times. We people have more challenges with their time, more personal challenges, family considerations, and it's becoming tougher for volunteers to come out, and so we really need to support them, we really need to thank them. And so this proclamation puts a little spotlight on their contributions for these unsung heroes of our community, and I just really want to thank the city of Brampton on behalf of Volunteer MBC and all of our member organizations for continuing to support volunteers in the city. Thank you.
I'll just say to that, you know, MBC, you're a fantastic organization, and you know, a lot of people in their daily lives don't see the amount of volunteers that are out there. And I have to say, in our area, you drive down Sandalwood Parkway on any given day, you see volunteers from the community picking up trash all along Sandalwood and the Turtle Troopers, and volunteers is truly what makes a great city, and we have some of the best volunteers in Canada, right here in the city of Brampton, and my hat goes off to you. I know that there's probably a lot of speakers that would like, a lot of counselors that would like to acknowledge you. Unfortunately, proclamations, you can only have one speaker, so I'll choose on behalf of council to say that, you know, thank you for all your contributions, and thanks to all the volunteers throughout this great city.
Thank you. Very honored.
I know Counselor Mederos wanted to acknowledge you as well. Technically, we have one response per proclamation. If you want to quickly say why you love them.
Sorry, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I think Counselor Pulashy captured it already. Counselor Keenan and myself, really proud to have Volunteer MBC in our area, but I just wanted you to comment. One thing I know in the volunteerism sphere is regarding the economic contribution that volunteerism does, and it often goes underappreciated. So just a quick words that we also recognize that it's such an important economic driver.
Absolutely, yeah. It's our economy, our gross domestic product. We realize that, you know, volunteers are giving an incredible amount of hours of time. When you actually, you know, count that up, you'll realize what an impact it makes to our whole country. And so especially now, when we're talking about the challenges that country faces and we face here in Brampton, it's really important we come together and support that. And one of the things that we like to do as well, on the other side of that coin, is emphasize to volunteers how it can help them with their health and well-being, their community belonging, and their skills and employability. So the more we encourage people to volunteer, the more they'll be ready to contribute in other ways to the community and be the best version of themselves. Thank you.
Okay, now we have, for those organizations that are here today, we're going to do the presentation of the proclamation, we'll take photos, and then we'll get back to our agenda. Yeah. Okay, those who have already had their photos, feel free to leave if you don't want to hear the rest of the scintillating council agenda. Our next item is held by Councillor Tor. He's a council sponsor for the 2025 Spring Moonshot Event. And we have Kyle Boico, President and Board Chair, Inspire Tech Canada Corp, will make an announcement. And then Councillor Tor, feel free to comment.
Thank you. Can I get on right and unmute?
Yeah. I know that.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Brown, and council members, Councillor Tor, and to Jasmine and Tara from the Innovation District. My name is Kyle Boico. I am the President and Board Chair of Inspire Tech Canada Corp. Inspire Tech is a nonprofit, non-government organization that empowers students to embrace science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, education, and fundamentals early on. In December, on the 5th, we hosted our initial Moonshot Event, which is basically to empower the community to come together to look at the industry of space and rocketry. Canada right now is sitting at about a $5 billion GDP level, trying to go to $40 billion by 2040. By creating educational, experiential learning events that are exceptional, it brings together community, industry, and education. Next week, on April 17th, we have the opportunity to do our next event, Spring Moonshot, bringing together Peel District School Board, York District School Board, the Toronto District School Board, leaders in industry, leaders in government, leaders in education, for an incredible in-person event at 8,000 Mississauga Road, Cannon, Canada. So Inspire Tech Canada's mission is to empower the leaders of tomorrow to become creators and makers. We do that through science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Specifically, this event is a moonshot to let the community know that there are career paths in space and rocketry. For anyone who doesn't know, Brampton has some of the greatest space organizations in the country. So we're thankful to council and Mayor Brown and Councillor Tor for this opportunity.
Hi, Councillor Tor.
I'm good. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Kyle, for this announcement that you brought forward. This is a really amazing event. The first event that was done earlier, I got to be a part of it. And at that point, I think it was only the Peel District School Board that was a part of it. So successful now that Toronto District School Board, the York District School Board want to be a part of this as well, because we're the only, if it's kind of an event, that's happening anywhere. So it's amazing to see all the Brampton tech that's being showcased here, but to get the best of the minds when it comes to the space cluster, to come together, have that discussion there. I know how excited I was as an adult to see the robots, the moon rovers, and I can only imagine how excited kids must be, you know, to come back to this event, to learn about the different career paths that are in the space industry. Also want to give a shout out to our staff that have been super supportive of this. Jasmine, I know this is on your plate now, she's been working really hard on this, and shout out to Devin as well, who was part of the team earlier that was part of the initial event. So thank you once again, Kyle. I look forward to being there.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Amazing. I look forward to attending that as well. And Councillor Tor, please share the details with all of council and see how we can be supportive.
Indeed. We had 3,100 students sign up for an event that could only hold 315.
Wow.
In three days. The demand remains there. We'll keep bringing these events back to Brampton.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I've got a request from Councillor Pelashy of a related motion to the Plant-Based Treaty proclamation. I'm going to seek if there's two-thirds to give Councillor Pelashy permission to introduce that motion.
I see that the two-thirds have met. Councillor Pelashy, if you'd like to introduce your motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as a, it was kind of just a discussion item. I don't necessarily have a motion, something I've been working on and for a little while now, and it was just timely that this organization came to us. I've been looking at, like, much like previous councils going through, you know, the banning of shark fin soup was, you know, a topic of discussion back then. Today seems to be, you know, the overfishing of krill in Antarctica, which is a, and I can get into a little bit of science behind it, but I think for the most of us know that krill is the, it's the OG of species. It's kind of the start and the beginning of evolution and/or us being here. So that being said, the work unfortunately that I've been doing isn't complete, but if we lose the krill in Antarctica, then we're essentially, I think, doomed as a species because everything falls from there. And there's a big support and trying to get more of the krill-based products that are in the market, more to a plant-based product that is just as good. And so I would like to maybe meet with, I don't know which staff I can meet with on this, but I would like an opportunity to potentially look at the banning of krill-based products in the city of Brampton. I'd like an awareness campaign and potentially reach out to any other advocates throughout the city to see if we can, you know, there's already, it's already been started, but let's continue some of the great work, you know, the sea shepherds and everybody that loves the oceans, loves life are continuing with, and if we can try that. So I guess my only request is to refer a discussion item with the potential of banning krill products in the city of Brampton, and to come back at a future meeting to see how we can accomplish that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did staff get down the, so the first vote was to reopen the agenda, which we had the two-thirds, and the motion is clearer?
I'm good with that. Sure. Yep.
Okay. Councillor Tor has a request at the same time.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Seeing as we have reopened the agenda, I would request that in the absence of Deputy Mayor's thing, right now, I know he's online, but he's dropping on and off the call. I was on text with him, he has a really poor internet connection. So I think one of our in-camera items, 19.4, is something that he wanted to speak to, but since he won't be at this, I am requesting that if we can defer that to whatever our next council meeting would be, so that he can be present for it. We've reopened it for us.
I'll just save us the time.
Okay. Okay. I think saying the same goal, but.
I'll withdraw my question. Thank you.
Okay. So this takes us to our next item, which is the Nigerian farmers market, which is taking place on Saturday, May 31st, 11:00 a.m. There is a presentation from Abedan Omotuk, Miriam Murtala, and Foluk. Do we have the group here or online? Uchi, do you know if they're here? Online, okay.
Good morning, Mayor Patrick Brown. Good morning, council, and then guest, esteemed guests of the house. My name is Abiado Abeto, and we are super excited to bring Nigerian market day to Brampton. And what is Nigerian market day? Nigerian market day is basically an open-air bustling African market that showcases culture, commerce, and brings community together. We have a short video we would like to play before I go on.
Please.
Thank you very much. Nigerian market day has been hosted in the past in cities like Calgary, like Winnipeg, Brampton, and this year will be taken into eight different cities across Canada. And then Brampton is one of the cities we'll be coming to on the 31st of May at the Chincozy Park from 11:00 a.m. And we're inviting council, and the mayor, and everybody in Brampton to come out and, you know, support local, come out and part of the market. So you wonder, oh, why, what's different? Like you saw in the video, everything, basically what we do is transporting you into the heart of Africa to show you how our market has been done, basically exchanging culture with the people of Brampton, and hoping you can learn, you know, a part of our culture through the market. Because for us, the market is not just, you know, going to buy and sell, it's community, it's relationship, it's a whole new, like, it's a bustling African market. And then we invite everybody to be a part of this. And that's why we're here today. I want to also give special appreciation to the mayor's office that has been very supportive of our events, and our friends within the Naiwakam Africans in Brampton and in Ontario as well.
Great. Well, we're excited for this night market. We know it's going to be a big success, and I look forward to attending myself. The Nigerian spirit is dynamic in our city, and you're going to, I'm sure, have more fans for this event. Very nice to see this global tour, and Brampton is part of this global tour. So thank you for the presentation. A motion moved by Councillor Pelashy, seconded by Councillor Power, to receive the delegation. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you. This takes us to our next item and to the clerk based on the consent. Did we put 7.1 into consent, or is that?
No, 7.1 is a presentation. And Councillor Santos' discussion item came forward.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councillors. As you will recall, on February 19th, I presented a report that outlined changes in our standard operating procedures as well as our enforcement posture. Now ideally, we would like to have six months' worth of data to really analyze the impact and look for trends. However, there was an appetite for a quick snapshot of some of the progress that we're already starting to see thus far. The goal today is to simply provide you with some data and speaking points should you receive some inquiries from the public. I will be providing a more fulsome analysis of the data following the second quarter. If we can go to the first slide. So if we just take a quick look at the metrics, the parking metrics on the left side, you'll see that these are just a Q1 2025 analysis. We've had roughly 27,000 parking complaints, and we've issued roughly 27,000 parking notices. While these numbers are not one-for-one, it does demonstrate that we are out there actively addressing the concern. In the middle, you'll see the Parking Complaint Service numbers, and we're up to 27,000, which is roughly a 43% increase. This is consistent with what the operational review showed, that year-over-year complaints are going up. The goal here is to reduce the number of complaints through proactive enforcement. So we will be looking at that trend to see it slow down and hopefully decrease. As we move over to the towing statistic, you'll see that year-over-year, from 2024 to Q1 of 2025, there's been a 97% increase in the amount of vehicles that we're towing. And it shows that there's a more consistent consequence to multiple parking infractions. And then over on the far right, we have the Property Standards proactive files with a 77% increase, and certainly the ARU and RRL task forces contribute to this. If we can go to the next one. The two columns on the left speak to escalated cases and escalation-related communication. We don't have any Q1 comparators. That was a new position that just started at the end of the year. So we have a 2024 stat, but really, it's a smaller level. What it does demonstrate though is it's a single point of contact for people. It builds a more consistent response and more expertise and efficiency. What this supervisor does is looks at the individual escalation, and then they have a number of tools at their disposal, whether it's loop enforcement, enforcement special attention controls, or even a single escalation action. When we look at the Loop Metrics column, you'll see that we've had 1,800 separate visits to streets over the first quarter alone, and that's resulted in 1,900 penalty notices just in relation to the loop enforcement. Graduated parking offenses on the far right, again, this is new, so we don't have a comparator, but in the first quarter, we have already issued 620 secondary notices and 282 third or additional notices. It's a significant increase in consequences is already occurring. The next slide, please. This is, some of this data has already been spoken to. It's just provided to you in a different format should you wish to disseminate it in this one. Some of the new info, part way down, you'll see zoning request responses, and we've had a 254% increase in the number of responses. This just speaks to the new position that council provided, the zoning plans examiner. That person is still assisting in backfill opportunities, so this number will increase significantly once they come on full-time. And then the final page is just a summary of some of the efficiencies that have already been reported. However, we have added to them because. However, we have added to them because we continually add efficiencies and implement strategies. We are transitioning to a proactive parking enforcement model. You'll notice the third bullet, we've changed the towing contract methodology from a low-bid single provider to a guaranteed response roster format model. This will increase efficiency and reduce time per tow. We've also implemented graduated penalties across pretty much the entire enforcement spectrum. And on the right-hand side, again, we've last counsel, we combined the refuse containers with the overgrown complaints. We have already hired the supervisor that will be overseeing that team. They will be starting May 5th and we're putting the strategies in place now so that they hit the ground running. We're in the process of sending out letters to all of the repeat offenders from 2024. So they're being put on notice and they will also be involved in our enforcement strategy where we'll be proactively going to them first to get ahead of things. And down at the bottom, just one more stat, year-over-year, we have doubled the number of seized accessible permits due to fraudulent use. So that's just a quick snapshot of where we are today at the end of Q1. We anticipate that this trajectory will continue and we will provide you again with greater insights following the conclusion of Q2.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. Just bringing up the discussion item at the same time as well. And over the past couple of weeks or couple of months now, I think, Rob, we've been going back and forth on the data related to comparing 2024 to 2025. And as you've presented, the stark difference is that we have implemented new things based on the RRL, based on property standards, based on things that have been flagged by Counselor Keenan, Counselor Power, other members of council here. And improving the process and getting even more strict when it comes to penalties and dealing with repeat offenders. So certainly in the area I represent, with the RRL and everything else, we're starting to see what that impact is. However, parking continues to be the top issue, representing 70% of all service requests to bylaw enforcement. And I know we're going to have a parking strategy coming forward as well, I think in September of this year. And I just want to make sure that when we are tracking the data and making these improvements to the enforcement of parking issues, 70% of service requests, parking issues, that we're mindful of the enforcement side of things when it comes to our parking strategy that's also coming forward. So just a question to staff, how can we ensure that when that data is also coming back, we're also informing the parking strategy so that we're not kind of in conflict with how we're enforcing and then implementing the parking strategy at the same time?
So I can certainly, sorry, Commissioner, if you want to. We're in constant communication. We're constantly talking back and forth and we share these reports and what the methodologies are. When we look at making bylaw changes, we're constantly bouncing ideas off of each other to make sure that we are in alignment and that there aren't things that, you don't know what you don't know. So unless we ask questions of other departments, we don't know how it's going to impact them. So we're constantly are communicating with each other.
Thank you, Rob. And I know Steve, you and I spoke about this as well, so I just want to make that direction clear that we, that it's informed when the parking strategy comes back. The other pieces that's, that's been useful for myself and my team is the escalation side. Enforcement escalation. So I've been very diligent.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thanks, Rob. Well, you know that Counselor Brown and I represent the ward that puts a massive shadow over the rest of Brampton when it comes to complaints and parking infractions. So I guess I'm interested, I'm certainly interested to that, to see what that next report is. But I would like kind of an understanding of, and I thought the numbers that we had seen included Q1, correct me if I'm wrong, Q1 2025, that latest, the stats, the data that we've received for our wards, that had nothing to do with 2025?
No, no, it did. That was the, the call volumes that you were looking at.
Right.
And yes, I'm, I'm pretty sure it did. I can double-check that, but I'm pretty confident it was 2025 numbers.
Okay, so then can we go back to that first number of parking complaints, parking penalty notices, 27,000? Because that doesn't, that doesn't seem like it relates well to the numbers that we received for wards 2 and 6. It kind of seems to be unbalanced a little bit. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't question the numbers. But maybe the, maybe the data we have is skewing it because it's prior to, additionally, it's prior to Q1 2025?
I'll certainly double-check it.
Okay.
I'm always good with questioning the numbers.
For sure.
The data is.
That's what we're here for, for sure.
Yeah, we absolutely need to. So I'll double-check that and confirm.
Okay. And then just, I would like to better understanding, I guess, of, you know, very heated matter that came up over the weekend that we were kind of all involved with. A resident of ours phoned, had parking put in through, through the reference, what do they call it now? Kobe. Never called it before, but okay. Put something through and then all of a sudden it was resolved. The car was still parked in front of the person's house.
Yes.
So, and this goes back to, you know, not being able to meet the demand of the calls that are coming in, resolving issues and, and the frustration that has come through residents. Is that something that you can speak about, how we're, how we're, we're changing that? Or is that something that's going to come in Q2 as well?
I could speak to it today.
Excellent. Please do so.
I could speak to it today.
Because I think, you know, for us, the amount of calls that we, we get just on, on parking alone is massive. But then the reoccurring calls to say, wait a second, you guys never came out and it resolved. So let's, let's see, can we make this public and how we're, how we're changing?
Yeah, so specifically through the chair, specifically, that's the, the value of that escalation's enforcement position. Previously, when an issue would come up, it would be given to either the director or one of the three managers or even a super, it just went where all over. Whereas now, everything is funneled through one person or one position that is staffed even when that person's on vacation. And so that incident in particular highlighted a training error where it was actually referred to another area, but they closed it inappropriately. Which then doesn't, although that's the, the reason, it's recognized, that causes frustration. The person sees that. So we wish that it wouldn't happen, but now we're catching that when it does, we're immediately into a training issue. The officer's educated and everyone's aware. So again, just an environment of constant improvement and we see it now and so we can address it.
Excellent. And I, I can appreciate that. Training errors, human error, that can happen for sure. It's, it's that, it's that piece of, of just trying to, you know, engage with the residents, get back to the residents.
Yeah.
And it's still, even given the, you know, the new hires and the new positions, it's still a struggle for, you know, residents when they're feeling like they're not being heard. So still, I know your team is doing fantastic work in getting us to where we need to be. So I applaud each and every one of you. The towing thing, you know, it's, it's, we recently were at a resident meeting just on Monday. 20 residents in the house and they were talking about this Lexus that had been parked outside for three months. It's been, it's been tagged a few times. It is even parked illegally. It's parked by, I don't know if we consider it illegal. The sign of no parking points this way, the sign of parking, like you can park on this side. It's in the middle. So I don't know if that's illegal or not, but I don't know why the car hasn't been towed. Like it's, it's, and it's not, I'm using this one example as, as examples. You know, and, and we're also being told that, you know, we need to ticket three times. Robert, is there an opportunity for us to look at no parking areas in the city? And especially the ones in the road that we're talking about, you can't park on both sides. One, one side of the street is no parking. And if there were parking, you couldn't get emergency vehicles down. If we were to take a road like this and put signs up, tow-away zone, park at your own risk or tow, is that give, is that get us out of the three, three-ticket rule? Because to park, to ticket a car three times, good luck.
Yeah.
Next, too impossible, unless it like this Lexus, which I suspect has probably been just stolen and dropped. Not the first time we've seen this.
Right.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, potentially. Could we do something like that where we're actually putting up tow-away zones? And then we're just sending tow trucks in, tow them?
We, I would defer to the, the planning and traffic for the sign each piece. But two, two parts of that is, one, when, when residents give you a specific item, by all means fire that to the enforcement escalations. That, that's what they're there for.
For sure.
We'll jump on it.
For sure. But how does it, can we work?
So the second piece, our, our process is after the third, we'll consider towing, but there's always a dynamic to consider. But that's not the case if they're obstructing traffic, if emergency vehicles can't get through. We can tow right away. Like it, we don't need to wait for that. Officers will go out, they will actually measure what the distance is and, and make sure that it is there. But if it isn't there, we can tow right away. And that's a priority one.
Okay.
So.
So maybe if we could relay that to 311. 311 is telling some residents, one in particular, that a car was parked in front of their driveway. That they're saying that that's not an emergency, that's not a reason for a tow truck to come out. The car was parked there for, for many, many hours blocking the person in. I would see that as an emergency and I would see that as more of an emergency than even plow trucks going down a road. Because what if that person needed to get out? What if they, so if we can have maybe that conversation also in just sidebar with Counselor Keenan, maybe there's an opportunity here that we can bring back a report through Kevin Miniker's team, Public Works, City Solicitor, to look at opportunities to, you know, give our officers more, the ability to get the tow and if there's signage saying that, you know, there's tow. Then we don't have to go out and take it, waste time three times. We can just get in there and tow if, if it's a zone. With spec, with, you know, items that need to be met would be, you know, the emergency vehicles. If it's, it's a smaller street, if it's an 18-meter street instead of the 21s or a 14 instead of the 18s, maybe it's an automatic and, and we can start looking at putting up these signs.
Through the chair, sorry. If it's a blockage, we already have that authority. Like it, like we don't, we don't need a sign to say tow. If an emergency vehicle can't get through, we have the authority to, to just pull it. We don't, we don't need to ticket a three. But we can certainly have the report. I just want to be extra sure.
We, we just met with these residents that were extremely emotional. The, the street is a very narrow street. They have a few of problem houses, people parking, you know, on the illegal side. Emergency vehicles can't get through. They're being told that no tow truck is coming.
Right.
And sometimes, and the one individual said, I literally called 311 to get parking control. Parking control was out there in like 20 minutes. Fantastic. Great job. But their tow's not coming, right? And the car's still there. So now if somebody has to call 911, then, you know, that's an issue. I don't know how long it takes to get a tow out there. But I think we need to, for, for not only us, but the people that are doing these illegal infractions, they need to know it's tow-away zone.
Yeah.
Park at your own risk. We're going to tow. Right? And then included in that report, can we find out what's happening with the impound yard that we were talking about a long time ago? Because the impound yard, there's one, things are going to, I don't want to, so with this, I don't want to, you know, make it harder for, you know, if people get in an accident, their car needs to, to be towed. I think they were going to Mississauga, so we put in a rule that they have to stay in Brampton until there's, but there's an impound yard. There's a motion. I'll bring it forward and send it to you, but if we can add that to it as well, please. Just so we can get more information and, and give our officers the strength, you know, to do the great work that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you, Counselor Paleshi. We have next on the list, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Rob, thank you for your team and everything you're doing. We, we see the changes and we know that your team is working extremely hard. I see the officers out there on a daily basis. So first, I want to start with amazing job and thank you to, you know, moving in the direction to get us where we need to be. So a couple of things, I'm just going to piggyback on, on Counselor Paleshi here for the towing aspect of this. I feel if we already have the ability and we have no parking on one side of the road and we're dealing with it, I'm dealing with it with Counselor Mederos in, in the Peel Village area where the school buses can't get through, emergency vehicles can't get through. Gerpreet was amazing, get out there, get, you know, trying to get some knowledge to the residents, physically knocking on doors to, with myself to say, you can't be doing this. If you see a note that you're going to get towed,
Yeah.
you're not going to park there. So you may take the risk to get a ticket. You're not going to take the risk of getting towed. And if we already have that ability, my suggestion would be to put up tow-away signage in any no parking zone that is there because of emergency vehicle widths. That would be my suggestion and, and I think it definitely would do what Counselor Paleshi is wanting. I think that the main thing is they know they're taking the risk, but we're trying to change the behavior. If you get there and you get towed, we're, you know, we're, we're in the right direction. Because even in the issue that we, that I was dealing with in particular, it stopped for two days and it's back again 10 times worse. So it's not, it's not really doing anything. So thank you, Counselor Paleshi, for bringing that up and suggesting that. I look forward to seeing what can come back. Onto the, the next piece I have is, is the parking. I, I feel like there might be a bit of misunderstanding when it comes to where you can park at your house on your driveway. And as you know, I've been leading this driveway change for quite some time that we're going through the process on. I've had some complaints come in about parking on the sidewalk, the walkway that was provided up to the front door. So what people did was this is what we're allowed on a driveway and then we put a walkway on this side and a walkway on this side. So it fits the driveway bylaw because it's two different, one's asphalt and the other side is concrete. But they're parking on it. So we've been, some reports have come in that bylaws been sent out and they said, based on the surface that it is, they're allowed to park there. So I looked into it myself a little bit and, and I know it's not the case. So I want to make sure that when we're doing these bylaw enforcements, that the officers have the right information. I received pictures of a fire in Brampton. Firefighters couldn't get in because the cars were physically parked all the way to the door. I drove down my street coming in here today. There's two houses with cars parked all the way to the door. When those houses have been looked at, they were told, whatever reason, that based on the surface and whatever, they're allowed to park there. And just, you know, I, I'm going to read this and if this isn't what it's supposed to be, then I'm happy to change it. But it says that in 13.4, "No vehicle trailer or related equipment shall be driven, parked, or stored on a surface other than a driveway or designated parking area that has been constructed in accordance with the city's bylaws and shall not include the walkway." So for me, I'm taking that as that they're not allowed to be parked there and that we should be fining for that. Can you clarify that that, that I am correct and that is the case and that our bylaw officers will be ticketing in this instance?
So when they measure the width of the driveway, they consider any place that the vehicle can, can park as part of the driveway. So the fact that it changed from pavement to cement is irrelevant. They will still measure that whole section.
The clarity that this isn't the case and if it is, we need to change this.
Through the chair, through to you, Counselor Keenan. What I suspect you're describing is some folks perhaps trying to circumvent the minor variance process for a driveway widening and buying those sort of concrete patio slabs and then couching that as landscaping and then using it to, to park a car. It would be my recommendation that I work with enforcement to, one, examine the, the bylaw you just read. And because in, in that instance, I would say that's in violation of the amount of permeable surface of a front yard and therefore would trigger the need for that homeowner to seek a minor variance application.
Okay. I just really want to make it clear that if you put a driveway and you have a walkway, you can't park on your walkway. You can't park in front of your door. I, I don't care what you put. You can put the most beautiful cement. You can't park there.
Listening in, there's nothing preventing a bylaw officer today from putting, I guess, a fine for a fine for infraction of the minimum front yard landscaping requirement, so the amount of grass and planting. So, that's one way we could look at it effective immediately without having to touch the driveway widening interpretation.
And even in the case that I'm discussing, there's tracks on the grass, which they need to replayer. And in this case, the bylaw officer said, "Well, you should be lucky that it's only this kind of damage and not much more. Not really appropriate. If you're not within the bylaw, we need to change the behavior." And that's what we're trying to get to, and you guys are doing a great job. I'm just giving you the issues there, we're showing up, and how we can work together to kind of mitigate these going forward. So, other than that, I love everything that you're doing. Thank you so much. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next up is Counselor Brouwer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and just want to thank my colleagues for all those comments and questions. And I just want to thank Rob and his whole team for doing such a great job, especially in Ward's two and six. Parking complaints is one of the biggest complaints that we have. And Gerpree, Counselor Santos mentioned, has done a wonderful job. Just met him on Monday, and these parking blitz have been working just with either education, or just making sure that we're ticketing them and that it's not appropriate. But just want to know, just with this report, are we providing the education that we need? I know a lot of residents do know that they can and cannot park, but there's some, there may be some individuals that we may need to educate and reinforce that these are the rules for the city. Just tying that along with these new developments, especially in Ward six, we see new subdivisions where we're seeing there's a lot of parking issues. And if we can integrate some of the planning and bylaws with these new divisions with the builders to let them know these are the do's and don'ts of this area. And I think when you especially talk to residents in new areas, they talk about, "Hey, where am I supposed to park? Are my, basically, the driveway is too small, or maybe some of them may be overhanging." But I think residents do need to be aware, and I think developers need to be mindful in letting them know, these are the parking spots that you will be receiving with the house. I think, you know, when you buy a house, you don't really talk about the parking, you don't talk about the driveway. But I think it's very important for residents to be aware of the driveways they're purchasing along with their houses.
Through the chair, yes, we are working with Strategic Communications. We have a spring campaign where we're putting that out. We'll also work with them to see if we can go directly to the developers to get that message to the homeowners, to the new homeowners.
Thank you.
Okay, that receives all the, covers all the questions. We have the motion and receive the presentation moved by Counselor Plessy, seconded by Counselor Santos. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our next item. Eight point one was put into consent. Going to, all the way to the clerk. The next item nodding consent would be sixteen point three is, oh, an update on the tariff task force. And thank you, Counselors Tor and Santos, for chairing that meeting yesterday. Very productive discussion with local businesses.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. We're just hoping to bring this more of an update to the rest of our council colleagues and any members of public that may be watching online. Yesterday was the first meeting of the mayor's tariff task force, you know, specifically to deal with the threat of tariffs that we're facing right now. A lot of good discussion came out of it. Thank you to the staff that worked so hard on this to make sure that we had voices from all different sectors represented at the table, and not just our large businesses, but our small businesses as well, in trying to understand, you know, how these changes are affecting all of them. A lot of points came out of it, which will be shared online as well. But, you know, I think the bottom line was to make sure that we can advocate for them to the federal government and the provincial government, given that the election's going on right now as well, hoping that we work with whatever the future government is going to be, to make sure that, you know, we can double down on our local businesses here, our local economy here. You know, there was a general theme amongst most of the talking points around cutting red tape, about taking advantage of the fact that Canada has the best workforce, but also taking that as an opportunity to, you know, rethink the immigration standards that are being, you know, shifted around in Canada, about skills development in the workforce that's happening in the country here. Those are some of the advantages that we have had, and we need to maybe, you know, relook it, see how we can make ourselves, you know, competitive again, when we're competing with the rest of the world right now. I'll pass it on to Counselor Santos to, you know, add further to, or, you know, further recap the discussion that we had yesterday, and maybe after that, if staff would like to say something to this as well. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Santos?
Thanks through, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to Counselor Tor, Mayor Brown, as well as the economic development team who put the tariff first tariff task force meeting together. There were twenty-two attendees online and in person, and I think one of the things that struck me the most was the fact that we had some pretty heavy hitters in the room. Magna joined us virtually from Germany. We had Peel Plastics in the room. We had Dyna Care virtually. We also had small business represented through Scooty, and we also had 3M there. So, there was a wide variety of different sectors that represent Brampton. The common theme, as Counselor Tor said, is a little bit of a feeling of being in purgatory. They don't really know what's going to happen next, and the level of uncertainty is causing significant pressure. However, one of the things, some of the things in the meeting were new ideas for us to take a look at in terms of advocating to the federal government, myself at FCM, and making network connections for these businesses. The other good news is that they are in lockstep with many of the things we're already doing and leading the way in the city of Brampton, and truly appreciative of the support that we're giving them. Hand it over to Denise.
Thank you, Counselor Santos, and Counselor Tor, and Mayor Brown for your leadership on this. Staff was very pleased, and I'm sure you were as well, by the businesses that we had in the room yesterday. It was very-
Yeah. Just wondering, notwithstanding the communication via the business community, what's the communication with the province and the federal government, for example? You know, we hear, I see what Doug Ford does, and certainly I know that the mayor has a good relationship, so he'd probably get information. But in terms from an institutional perspective, are we, does the Ministry of Economic Development have some form of roundtable where they're in contact with municipalities? Is there communication going out? Is there a gap there? Maybe you can talk to us what's happening?
So, we're going to be repositioning our pitch to align with the federal government, and we are working closely with the province as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Plessy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, briefly, I just heard a few members of the community saying that it was successful. They thought it was a very good meeting yesterday. I didn't get an opportunity to talk to, nor, and I will, but certainly, you know, the hardest hit, I think, of all the terrorists, Brampton-based company, Triple M. I knew that they were present, didn't get a chance to talk to them about how he feels, and actually how we've been working with them, if we've been working with them. I guess they would be, they'd be so far ahead of probably where we would ever be, or any other government, because I had discussed with them earlier on, them reaching out to the feds to understand what the tariffs meant for them, and they were getting nothing, nowhere. So, they needed to, I guess, pivot and try and get some help, which they had. But that was during the whole roller coaster of the tariff, not tariff, so. But I know that I had been requested by them to send Counselor Santos some information. I did send it. Hope you received it, Counselor Santos. And I just want to make sure that we're working with, they're probably one of, you know, Brampton's highest employed, they employ more Bramptonians than a lot of other businesses. So, just want to make sure that we're having that good working relationship, because I can get into other stuff, but I won't. But I'm sure the discussions are being had, and we're here to help. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing on this, Denise.
Thank you, Counselor Plessy.
Counselor Tor?
Yeah, just to Counselor Plessy's point as well, we did have Todd Kerr at the meeting as well, participated. Everybody was given the opportunity to speak from their industry perspective on what changes they would like to see. The question was put forward was that if they had a direct line to the next prime minister, what would that conversation be like, and what you would like to see? So, I think that's all been captured by our staff, and we will be advocating on their behalf. We're in constant communication with all the big businesses, but also, you know, we're lucky to have Vito from Unifor as well, that staffed the Stellantis plant. They represent thousands of workers at that plant as well. So, it's very important to have these large employers at the table. At the end of the day, these are workers that live in Brampton, that have families in Brampton, that need to put food on the table, and they're most immediately impacted. There are some industries that will be impacted down the line, but these are the ones that are facing the immediate impact of this. So, thank you once again to our staff, and I look forward to that report coming back to council with an action plan that I think we can all endorse and help our businesses out. So, once again, thank you to staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tor. This takes us to an item we missed, actually, fourteen point two. That is the item held by Counselor Keenan. And before we go to Counselor Keenan, just on the note of this Stand Up For Canada campaign, Counselor Keenan was instrumental yesterday in Elektra, making an announcement that they are joining the Stand For Canada procurement, and that there'll be Canadian companies, hopefully companies in Brampton that are able to benefit from that procurement. The utility sector across the province is over a billion dollars in procurement from transformers to smart meters. There are companies in our area that can bid on goods that are largely, in some cases, going to U.S. companies right now. So, great work, Counselor Keenan, on that, and over to your item, fourteen point two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so this is just the correspondence in regards to the food trucks in downtown. So, I just want to refer this to staff, maybe to come back with a report. Just, really just telling us, you know, what the steps are, and which way we're gonna move, and the potential to look at a new bylaw for food trucks downtown. I would hope in anything new coming forward that we would, you know, consult the BIA to see, you know, what could be done. There has been other BIAs in Mississauga and elsewhere that have recently made changes to the food trucks in their downtown. So, I just hope that staff could come back with something on this.
Through the chair to the counselor. We're actually already in the process of doing that. So, there is a report coming, I believe, April twenty-third is the anticipated date for that. We're talking both about the food truck specifically, as well as the mobile licensing bylaw more generally.
Okay. So, I just want you to have a look at this, because I know this was important to the BIA. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keenan, I certainly heard those concerns from our downtown BIA as well. So, a move by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Vasante. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us, clerk, to our, okay, public question, for any public questions? Seeing none. This is the bylaws. We have a motion moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Plessy, to approve the bylaws, five nine two twenty-five to two zero twenty twenty-five inclusive. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to closed session. I have a motion moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Power, to move into closed session to deal with the following items, which are items nineteen point three, nineteen point four, nineteen point five. All those in favor? Motion carries. To the clerk, would ten minutes be adequate to go into closed session? It is eleven thirteen. We'll meet at eleven twenty-three in closed.
Yeah, closed session is long.
It shouldn't be too long.
Yeah, there's a whole presentation. It's long. Great.
Now? Who wants to go right to closed session? Okay, so let's go to closed session and we'll-
I didn't see any hands.
That's it. Closed session in ten minutes. Okay. To members watching at home, closed session meetings are completed. Council reconvenes and shares in public session any actions that have arisen from closed session, and the clerk will put that on the screen. We have, we already adopted a consent nineteen point one and nineteen point two. Nineteen point three, the item was considered and referred back to staff. Nineteen point four, the item was considered and referred back to staff. Nineteen point five, the item was considered and referred back to staff. I have a motion moved by Counselor Brouwer, seconded by Counselor Tor, to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our last item of business is item twenty-one, adjournment. I have a motion moved by Counselor Maderos and seconded by Counselor Keenan to adjourn today's meeting. We will next meet on Wednesday, April thirtieth. All those in favor? Motion carries.